June 21st, 2022, in the City Council chambers here on Maple Avenue. If everyone would please stand, we'll have the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be given by Shirley Murdoch, Member Church of the, uh, excuse me, Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. Welcome Shirley.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're gathered together here in the attitude of a City Council meeting. We are so deeply grateful that we can do this in a land, in a country, in a city that has government of the people, by the people, and for the people. We ask that we're so grateful for our mayor and the City Council members, and we ask thee to bless them with guidance and discernment and inspiration to answer to the many requests, demands, and things that cause a city to operate successfully. We're grateful for Independence. It's a lovely city, and it takes a lot to have it going positively all the time. We also ask thee to bless America and to bless Ukraine, that they might be successful in vanquishing the foe that is there. We love thee. We ask proceedings upon this meeting in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Please be seated. All right, that brings us to the magnificent roll call. So Madam City Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmembers Fears.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Steinmeier.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Rowland.
Here. All right, we have a citizen's request. Okay. We have one independent citizen who would like to talk. Tony Summer, please come forward and share your thoughts, and thank you for being here.
All right, thank you. After the city manager presented the budget a couple weeks ago, there's a discussion about how we can attract more visitors to Independence. That strongly reminded me of a scene from the beginning of the movie Moneyball, where they're trying to replace the star players they lost, and Brad Pitt is frustrated at his scouts who are talking a bunch of nonsense, prompting him to tell them that they're not even looking at the problem. During this study session, there's lots of talk about how to attract people to visit all the historic sites that Independence is blessed with. And it's true, Independence has a rich history matched by few cities of our size, and the new Truman Library is truly a world-class museum. But in all of that talk, nobody looked at the real problem. The reason we don't get more tourism is because Independence is boring. Sure, the Truman Library is absolutely incredible, but after you've walked through the museum, then what do you do? You could go to the square, but there simply isn't enough to do on the square to fill your time. We may not want to admit it, but deep down, we all know it's true. I mean, we actually live here, yet how many of us have ever spent a Saturday or Sunday just hanging out at the square? It doesn't have to be this way. Recently, I was in Colorado and visited Pearl Street in Boulder. Unlike the square, which is mostly devoid of people and whose shops have very limited hours, Pearl Street was full of people. Every shop was open and full of customers, and there were even hundreds of people just hanging around outside. Like Independence, Boulder has a population of little over 100,000 people and is a suburb of a larger city. But unlike Independence, they don't have a former president, they don't have historic trails, they aren't an important city in a major religion. The only reason their Pearl Street is so much more vibrant than our square is because they actually looked at the problem and had the courage to fix it. The problem is that in Independence, we have designed our city exclusively for the maximum convenience of car traffic at the expense of everything else evident in our cities downtown. While the square uses its limited space for hundreds of parking spots and wide roads that encourage cars to drive through at high speeds, Boulder closed off their Pearl Street to cars entirely and used their space for things people can actually use, like playgrounds, food carts, and benches and tables. I know you all are skeptical that this one thing could make such a big difference, but we run this experiment every single year here in Independence. Once a year, we copy Pearl Street and close the square off to cars, turning space that is normally exclusively dedicated to cars into wide paths for people to walk down, shops and stalls for people to buy stuff from, and even places for concerts and games. By simply allowing people to fully use the space, our boring and sleepy square is suddenly allowed to be a vibrant and fun place that people from all over come to visit. This is an easy, and importantly, given the budget, cheap solution. Some things that we could do include closing the square off to cars every weekend, not just on Santa Calagon, but every weekend, and rent out the parking spaces to food trucks and other small vendors. Replace as many parking spaces as possible with permanent parklets, which can include things like playgrounds, green space, or benches and tables. Implement traffic calming measures to force cars to drive slowly and make people feel safer when walking around the square. Replace city-owned parking lots with green space while aggressively replacing them with mixed-use developments to give people more things to do and more opportunities to live on the square. By doing things like this, we will be looking at the real problem facing the square in Independence' tourism problem as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate you being here. Okay, then any other citizens? None? Okay. The next thing we have is proclamations. Is Lexi here today? Hi, Lexi. We have a proclamation for you. Madam City Clerk is going to read it. Hang on just one second. As soon as she reads it, I'll come over and we'll get a picture, okay? All right, thank you.
Whereas being kind can go a long way, but many times it's not recognized. And whereas the Kindest Kansas Cityan Awards are celebrating kindness for the 32nd year, and whereas part of the event honors 20 kindest Kansas Cityans nominated by students ranging from kindergarten to seniors in high school. And whereas Alexis Diaz, a sophomore at Fort Osage High School, nominated Shelley Cartwright as her kindest Kansas Cityan. Whereas Alexis is finding in her heart to help, or excuse me, whereas Alexis says finding in her heart to help someone at their lowest point in life is the most humanly possible thing you can do to show your kindness, not only is she helping others in her community, but she's keeping her son's name alive. Whereas the City of Independence wants to recognize Alexis Diaz for her thoughtful and kind words, and whereas the City of Independence celebrates these inspiring examples of kindness. Now therefore, Rory R. Rowland, Mayor of the City of Independence, hereby proclaims Alexis Diaz Day.
Very good.
It ends right there.
I think we need to write into the proclamations, applaud now, don't you agree? You just applaud now. Thank you. Lexi, come on up. Do you like a photo?
You go ahead. Perfect.
Mom, would you like to have a picture or two?
Sure.
All right. And since she actually wrote a, well, actually, if I, can I take a moment here to kind of explain this? She actually wrote a article or a piece at school, and it was contributed, and she wrote it on, what, Shelley, she wrote it about Shelley and Cory's Network. And Shelley is a woman, her son was murdered here in Independence, gosh, it's been probably, what, 70 years ago, something like that. She contacted me from her brief from her son being stabbed, she started Cory's Network. And what she does is she helps people pay for funerals of folks who have had children who have been killed with violence. And she, I see you shaking your head there, so I know you know Shelley and have worked with her, and I just think that's absolutely terrific. And so what I wanted to do is actually have a Be Kind pen, and I want to give that to you, because you were kind, and so was Shelley, and thank you for all that you do. So keep up the good work. You've, thank you. And if that was all I had to do in this job, it would be great. Oh, come on, give me a pity laugh. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda, that brings us to consent agenda items.
Mr. Mayor, I'd re-
Proceed.
Thank you. I move that we approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other items for separate consideration, councilmembers?
Yes.
Councilmember Fears?
22762 and 22763.
227- 62 and 63?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make a note.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I have 22761?
22761?
Correct.
Okay. And I think that's our limit for the day. No, I'm just teasing. Anyone else? Okay? We have three items that are being asked to be taken off the consent agenda, 22761, 22762, and 22763. Any others before we move on? Very good. We've got the first item for consideration is 22761. Is that correct? Okay, and then we'll talk about those later. Okay, pardon me, we need to take a roll call for the consent agenda items. So Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Thank you. I'll just go in numerical order, not to, but councilmember, would you like to proceed with 22761?
I will, thank you. So on 22761, that's a resolution approving a temporary building permit fee waiver program for infill and development of single-family residents. And reviewing this, it's a good program, it's right where we need to be. But if you go to your mapping sections down there, there is a portion of that area that has been excluded from this, and I've had some discussions just before the council meeting with Mistress Cannell, our Community Development Director. It's the proposed building permit fee waiver program area. And within that, there is an exclusion portion which is south of Truman Road and north of 23rd Street there. It's kind of in the heart and the middle. I'll be frank with you that the mapping that is here, that I have on my tablet, is not good. So I printed it out. So my, my ask is that we include this portion into the mapping area for the purpose of, since the Inglewood Arts, and I believe many of you have met with Inglewood Arts and their overlay program, which also has the auxiliary dwelling units which would be appropriate and possible within this area, to include this mapping exclusion of the map area and include that. So I will, did that make any sense, what I just said? Was that clear as mud?
Yeah, sorry. But what you're saying, if I'm hearing you correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, is you're saying you want to amend, do you want to hold this item and make the resolution correct in the way that you see it, or how do you want to go forward?
We can make the amendment here now.
And you've got it, ready to go?
Ready to go, to include the map, include the area that has been unincluded with Scott Avenue on the west side, West Short Avenue on the north side, West Walnut, then South River, and South Cottage on the east side, with Linden Avenue on the north side.
Okay. And so you've got the map there. Do you have the amendment written out?
No, I'll just make the motion then to we amend the map to include these boundaries.
Okay. Very good. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
Can we go and find out why it was excluded to begin with?
Okay. Proceed.
So from talking with our Community Development Director, they were using the, I'll have to go back here, they were using the the state's neighborhood preservation program was the general consensus on the mapping. And with further discussion with our director, staff sees no problem with amending the map and including this portion.
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
Question on, so in looking at the map, there's essentially three areas that are not included in that, Councilmember Perkins, which of those three areas is that? This one here?
Correct.
Okay. And do we know why the other two areas that are kind of surrounded were not included? Or?
Because they didn't, sorry, didn't interrupt, because they did not fall within the, let me just read here. Did not fall within the state neighborhood preservation program, which is measured by income.
Okay.
And that. So the reason we're bringing this forward here would be because Inglewood Arts, they're working on their overlay program, which would allow the auxiliary dwelling units, which would be the infill development. So having that kind of right in the heart and in the middle of what they're doing, you, we will most doubtably have people that are wanting to do infill within the bigger arts district and have the fee waived, and then have individuals within this excluded portion who would like to do the same, but would have a fee.
Any other questions? None. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Okay. Councilmember Fears will take up, I'm sorry. Okay. We also need a motion to approve the amended item as it stands, so.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Thank you, and the motion carries. 22762 was pulled out. Councilmember Fears, you're free to discuss.
Okay, thank you. So you might remember that back when the budget was presented, I raised concern about the million dollars that we needed to find out of the Staywell Fund or Staywell Healthcare Program. And when was that, Mr. Walker? I'm trying, was that?
May the 5th.
May the 5th, okay, thank you. And so at that time, I asked if the Staywell Committee would be forthcoming with a recommendation, and to my knowledge and my understanding, they have not come forward with the recommendation, so I'll be supporting this resolution tonight.
Okay. Anyone else?
So I make that motion.
Okay, got a motion? And a second?
Second.
Maybe we can still discuss.
Dan, second.
Dan, you did second? Or excuse me, Councilmember Hobart? Please forgive me. Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, with this, there has been some discussion, and I see that there's a member of the Staywell, the chairman of the Staywell Committee, would the council entertain the possibility of having that discussion to allow Mr. Veat to come up and discuss why we've reached the conclusion that we've reached here today?
Any objections? Okay, hearing no objections, please invite him up. Mr. Veat?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Councilmember Fears, you are correct. We were instructed on May 5th to buy this dice to come up with a recommendation. This issue stems from a bigger problem than just from May 5th. I directed the Staywell Committee along with our consultant to start looking at this back in early March, because we knew that we were going to run into a deficit problem. We started looking at this back in March at our regular meeting. CBIZ, who is our consultant, brought these numbers to us. And just to give you an idea, our current plan for 2022 costs $19.4 million. Projected, without making any changes, our plan for 2023 was going to be $23.8 million. That's a $4.4 million deficit that we were facing as a city, the city and the employees that we're facing. So I met with city administration with Mr. Walker and Mr. Norris. We've been in discussion since April. I've directed CBIZ to come back with recommendations. They brought recommendations back. They weren't up to our standards, so I asked them to go back and look at them and make some deeper cuts, and we need to really get down to the bottom of this problem. We were informed on June 13th, which would have been a week ago yesterday on Monday, of these potential plan design changes. Staywell had two special meetings last week on Tuesday and Thursday. We felt that there were still some outstanding analysis that needed to be completed on the pharmacy side, and we felt that in our discussions, we didn't have all the evidence and all of the material to make a fiscally responsible recommendation to this council. So that's why on Thursday, the Staywell Committee made the recommendation to the city manager that we ask for another month, and that we'd have a recommendation to his office by July 31st to move forward. With that, I will explain a little bit for some of the individuals that don't know, our budget year is July 1 through June 30th, whereas the plan year for our health insurance is January 1 through December 31st. Typically, we are not making these decisions until August, September, in preparation for open enrollment. Now, at first, I was a little upset that we were having to make these decisions this early, but in conversations and as cooler heads prevail and conversations with the city manager's office, I actually think this is going to be very beneficial, because as we make these recommendations, it'll give the city and the Staywell Committee and our HR department time to put our open enrollment packets together and have that clear, concise communication with our members, so that they actually understand what plans are being elected and the changes that are coming. So from my position as the Staywell Chair, it's my responsibility to have that recommendation to the city manager by July 31st, and in talking with our consultants at CBIZ, we feel that we can have that by that time.
Any other questions or discussion? Go ahead. Absolutely, sure.
Mr. Veat, just a question, so do you, you know, when you are able to pull together a recommendation like this, then I'm hopeful, I guess just a comment, I'm hopeful that you're able to do that in the, I guess, I will continue to vote in favor of this resolution in case you're not able to come through with that recommendation. You know, this is essentially to bring a recommendation to us from the city manager's office. Certainly, there's nothing that precludes us from entertaining a recommendation from his office and from the Staywell Committee at the same time, so that way we have maybe, if needed, multiple scenarios to take a look at, so.
I can say in the years that I've been doing this, I've been on the Staywell Committee 10 years and been involved in this process, and I can say that typically, almost every time that the recommendation that comes out of the Staywell Committee is sat down with and had conversations with our city administration and city manager's office, and we're always able to come to a resolution as one to bring to this council. So I'm very confident that whenever we do make a recommendation to the city manager, that we can sit down and have those discussions. It's my intent, you know, I know the city manager's asked for a million dollars worth of savings, but it's our intent to cover the deficit of the $4.4 million so that we are whole through 2023, but at that same time, this committee and the city manager's office are going to be tasked with looking at some very structural drastic changes in the coming years to make sure that we can self-sustain our insurance plan. If we were to make no changes right now, the Staywell Plan would be bankrupt by June 30th of next year, and we would have no insurance at all. So this is a very vital, important piece, and it's something that everybody on the committee, as well as the city manager's office recognizes that we want to get something done.
Well, I certainly hope that you're able to bring us one recommendation as well, and I want to thank you for your efforts and the committee for their efforts as well.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Thank you. The motion carries. And, let's see, the next one is 22763. Councilmember Fears?
Yes, I have a motion for substitution for this bill.
Okay.
Rest of the resolution. And I've provided copies of that to the council members and city manager. So maybe I should explain it before I-
Absolutely, proceed.
So.
Do we need a second? I'll second it, and then we can-
Yep, thank you, and then we can talk. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So just to, for the public's benefit, what this resolution is doing is, as I would substitute, amend it, would be to, number one, instead of directing the city manager to negotiate a contract, to direct the city manager to negotiate a proposal for Economic Development Services with the Chamber of Commerce. We've not seen a proposal from them, and I don't know what that proposal would be before I would feel comfortable voting on something like this. I would need to know what that proposal is. And so that's section one. Section two is modified to note, that the city manager is directed to notify that the Independence Council for Economic Development of withholding the payments until further notice. We, or I'm of the opinion that, that the, we need to, you know, withhold that until we determine what action we want to take with this particular resolution. And then section, adding a section five, section three and section four are unchanged, adding section five, that the city manager will consult with both the EDC and the chamber and present a recommendation for the city council consideration at the August 8th study session. It's my understanding that neither the EDC Board nor the Chamber Board have had an opportunity to discuss this, and I think they need the opportunity to discuss this, weigh in on it, and make proposals. I'd like to really see a proposal from either, each organization as to what they would do going forward. The concern I have is that I don't think we've done a great job at development in the last several years in our community, and I think we could do better, and so I'd like to see proposals to do that. And that's my, so that's my motion for substitution.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Members? Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing no other discussion, we have a motion for a substitution for the new resolution for 22763 with the amendments that Councilmember Fears had just made. So with that being said, I would add, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Thank you. And motion for approval of the substitution. So Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
We need the motion.
Oh. Would you take another motion?
Make a motion to approve the bill as a substitution.
Okay.
Second.
And I didn't mean to cut you off there, my friend, so please forgive me.
Thanks.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to accept the amended resolution. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Okay. And that brings us to the regular agenda and public hearings, if I'm correct, Madam City Clerk. So this is a public hearing. If you could read item number one, please.
A public hearing for the application by Samuel Dreyer requesting a rezoning from C2 General Commercial and R6 Single Family Residential to C3 Service Commercial for the property located at 1311 East US 24 Highway. New information only.
So I'll open the public hearing, and this is a-
So, I'll open the public hearing, and this is a public hearing for new information only. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning application was considered by Planning Commission on May 24th of this year. Planning Commission did recommend in favor of this rezoning. This will take a portion of property that's currently C2 and R6 to a C3 for a telecommunications contracting company. I have no new information to add.
Okay. Thank you very much. That will close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 22-046, An Ordinance Approving a Rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District C3 Service Commercial for the property at 1311 East US 24 Highway in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing no discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Madam City Clerk, if you can go ahead and read item number two, please.
A public hearing for the application by Seth Veld requesting a rezoning from R6 Single Family Residential to R30 PUD High Density Residential Plan Unit Development and approved a preliminary development plan for the property located at 316 West Sea Avenue. New information only.
Go ahead and open a public hearing. Proceed.
Thank you again. This rezoning application was also considered by Planning Commission on May 24th of this year. Planning Commission did not recommend in favor of this rezoning. This was a rezoning to take a property currently R6 to an R30 PUD for the purpose of a residential fourplex. I have no new information to add.
And if I can just ask one question, if I may, please. So, if I heard you correctly, the Planning Commission actually declined this or voted no?
They did.
What was the vote count, do you remember?
Uh, let me look it up real quick.
One to five.
It was one to five. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. All right. I will, since that was new information only, we'll close the public hearing. And, Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 22-047, An Ordinance Approving a Rezoning from District R6 Single Family Residential to District R30 PUD High Density Residential Plan Unit Development and approving a preliminary development plan for the property at 316 West Sea Avenue in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
I have a question for Mr. Arora. Thank you. So, the reason why they were here looking for the rezoning is because they've lost their grandfather status, and they need to, for a multi-dwelling unit, they need to have this rezoned for that.
So, in this particular situation, the property owner had purchased this home and with the intentions of using it as a fourplex. So, at some point, I mean, it's a single-family home that was somehow converted, and we don't really know, we don't have a history of any kind of permits or anything that shows it being converted to a fourplex, and so that is the reason why, the request. Now, it's an R30 PUD, it wouldn't be any other type because of the size of the lot, so for that size with four units, the density would have to be an R30 PUD, which is not characteristics of the surrounding area.
Correct. Thank you. I've received, to my colleagues, I've received several phone calls and some different concerns about having that back to a multifamily unit dwelling, a fourplex, doesn't fit the character of the housing stock around there, but then also, the city through our UU, UDO have come up with the best practices of when a multi, when a single family who has been developed, for whatever means, into a multifamily unit, that that reverts back to a single-family dwelling house if it loses its grandfather status. So, for those reasons, I'll be asking my colleagues to vote no on this approval.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
No. Thank you, and the motion fails. Madam City Clerk, could you please read item number three?
A public hearing for the application by Matt O'Neill requesting a special use permit to operate a tunnel car wash at 1337 South Nolan Road. New information only.
It's a public hearing, so I'll open a public hearing, and please proceed.
Thank you again. This is a special use permit that was considered by Planning Commission also on May 24th. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this special use permit. This is for the existing Quick Shine Tunnel Car Wash that's on Nolan Road. The applicant or the owner had unfortunately allowed his special use permit to expire, and so that's what this is, and I have no new information.
Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk?
Bill number 22-048, An Ordinance Approving a Special Use Permit to Operate a Car Wash at 1337 South Nolan Road in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Madam City Clerk, please, item number four.
A public hearing for the application by Gus Salmon requesting a special use permit to operate a used vehicle sales business at 203 North M291 Highway. New information only.
Proceed.
Thank you again. This special use permit was considered also on May 24th. Planning Commission did not recommend in favor of this special use permit. This is to convert a commercially zoned property along M291 Highway that was previously a diner to allow the use of used car sales and light auto repair. I have no new information to add.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Bill number 22-049, An Ordinance Approving a Special Use Permit to Operate a Used Car Lot at 203 North M291 Highway in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please, proceed.
This is actually in my district. I will be voting no on this. We just have a lot of car lots in that area, and I don't think another one's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart? Any other discussion?
I agree with Councilmember Stewart.
Okay. You need to be recognized first.
You're right, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Stewart, wholeheartedly, and I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I can chime in, can I be recognized to speak?
Of course.
If I can chime in, Councilmember Stewart, I completely agree with you, and I also will be voting no. So, with that being said, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Stewart?
No.
Steinmeier?
No.
Hobart?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
No. That brings us to non-ordinance items. Okay. And that brings us to non-ordinance action items. Madam City Clerk, please read the item.
Bill number 22-765, A Resolution Creating the Charter Review Commission for the City of Independence, Missouri to consist of nine members to be appointed by the city council defining the purposes and duties of said commission and the objectives sought to be accomplished and further providing for the organization and plan of operation for said commission.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
I actually had some questions.
Sure.
So, the first would be, why is this a resolution and not an ordinance? Because the previous one we did was an ordinance.
I can't speak to why the other one was done as an ordinance. That item was not added by our office, it was added by a member of the governing body. Ordinances are used to codify something that's going to be enforced by law, so the City Code of Ordinances, and this isn't adding any kind of enforcement, regulation, item to the City Code, so that's why we've added it here in this place.
Okay. So, I thought, one of the original reasons, or one of the reasons that were given for the repeal of the first one was that we would get more public input. Has this public input happened somewhere that I'm not aware of? Because I haven't seen or heard it.
I'm not aware of the request for public input. I'm aware that I was asked to do research and make a recommendation of how to form the committee.
Okay. Okay. So, now, some comments. I believe that, I just believe the entire resolution is just convoluted, and I just think it's too much as far as the nomination and the appointment process go. There are many things I don't like about it. I don't, one of them is I don't like the size of the committee. I still think it should be seven members. The topics that are being asked to discuss, I'm highly object to one of them. And then, one of my biggest problems with the resolution is that it excludes the nomination of any former mayor's council members or employees. Why does it do that?
When we looked at best practices with other cities, you tend to want to try to bring people forward who maybe aren't perceived, already have a preconceived notion about what does or doesn't work with government, and also to expand the pool of everyday citizens who are forming the charter that the people approve.
All right, that's all I have. I will be voting no on this, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
I, I'd like to see us table this tonight and bring it into a study session, and we have the discussion that we had talked about having so that we have more public input, at least they're aware of what we're talking about, some of the objectives that are sought, and it gives those of us who haven't really been able to give input, some input tonight. So, I'm going to ask that we consider tabling this and bring it into a study session environment, and let's do this the right way.
Okay.
So, I move to table this tonight, and until after we've had a study session on it.
Okay, there is a motion to table this item and move it to a study session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Madam City Clerk, please take the roll in order to table this and have a study session for it. So, Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the motion carries to postpone this and have a study session, and Mr. City Manager, you know where to go from here with that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, my friend. All right. Now, I've lost my place. Help me out. Two, thank you. Eric here. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
Amending the fiscal year 2022/2023 submitted budget by reducing capital maintenance funds in the transient guest tax fund by $75,000 and adding funding in the transient guest tax fund in the amount of $75,000 for a National Frontier Trails Museum master plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
I, I sort of kicked this off a little bit with our city manager, number two and number four both, in talking with some of the folks from our hotel association. As we have not had much of a tourism or a transient, transient guest tax that feeds into the tourism fund, we haven't had much of that department over the last year. We have some vacancies in that department as well. So, in discussing that with the city manager and some of the hotel alliance folks, they thought that adding, adding a little bit of budget back in to come up with a tourism master plan would be appropriate. Obviously, that would be done by a consultant, but someone that's a tourism master plan. There's a gentleman that spoke earlier tonight that sort of mentioned, how do we get more people to town? And I agree, we've not done well with it, so the goal of this is to give us a plan that hopefully we can then execute on. That's number four. Number two is the National Frontier Trails Museum. It's a little bit of a passion for me. Our National Frontier Trails Museum is in woeful condition. That's not the result of a lack of effort by staff or anyone else. It's simply not an interesting attraction, and certainly not the one that it should be. I would like to get a plan in place for the equivalent of a modern, interactive, interesting trails museum, much in the vein that the Truman Library's been redone, albeit certainly at massively less cost than that, so that we can add just another attraction to the city. Hopefully, at some point, we would then be able to get funding for that and have a really nice, neat attraction. We should seek, I think the city, we should all come together and work with the city manager. We should, along those veins, try to, try to get our museum recognized as the Trails Museum federally, and I think that might be a way to get some funds for it, too. So, that would be my idea in all this. I know that Director Heidi and Mr. Walker are very much on board with this and are sort of excited to try something new. So, anyway, that's too much, but that's where it came from, and I hope you guys will consider it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember. Any other discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And Madam City Clerk, can you read the next item, please?
Amending the fiscal year 2022/2023 submitted budget by correcting discrepancies in the parks, recreation, and tourism budget and reducing capital expenses in the tourism fund in order to have a positive fund balance.
Hearing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And Madam City Clerk, go ahead and proceed to the next item.
Amending the fiscal year 2022/2023 submitted budget by reducing capital maintenance funds in the transient guest tax fund by $75,000 and adding funding in the transient guest tax fund in the amount of $75,000 for a tourism master plan.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And that brings us to ordinances. Madam City Clerk, could you read the next ordinance, please?
Bill number 22-045, An Ordinance Adopting the Annual Operating and Capital Budgets of the City of Independence, Missouri for the fiscal year July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023, estimating the revenues for said fiscal year appropriating sums for the purposes stated in said budget establishing operating transfers, designating fund balance allocations, establishing the authorized table of organization, and designating those who may make a requisition for encumbrances against appropriations. Second and final reading.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
So, over the last couple of months, I've spent a significant amount of time reviewing this, and I want to first thank city manager and Mr. Kidney for hours of their time answering my questions, because they were, there were a lot, and, you know, a lot of this is me coming up to speed on this, but, you know, I guess I just want to acknowledge that there's a lot of work that's gone into this, and that while I do have some concerns relative
a lot of work that's gone into this and that while I do have some concerns relative to just the scope of the budget and the long-range ability for the city to maintain this, this level of expenditure, I'm satisfied with the answers I received for this and so I'll be voting to approve it tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other discussion? If I can, proceed with a couple of questions I have and...
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Notice I said that reluctantly with some sarcasm. But anyway, thank you. Mr. City Manager, one of the things that we've talked about since then and we're still working on this, and I wanted folks that are here tonight to know that we're working on it, is homelessness in our city is a big issue. And I hear about it a lot and as we should. And one of the things that we need to do, you know, going forward in this budget, and I know we're working on that, and it, you know, I'll give you a moment to describe your process, but, you know, I've heard from so many citizens and I just feel like we as a body would be incredibly remiss if we didn't start to address that issue, to talk about the issue, to get some best practices and things like that. And if you could, just kind of bring us up to speed, kind of where we're at. And then, you know, Councilmembers, please feel free to answer my questions. I think that's incredibly, incredibly important for us to discuss and I think it'd be incredibly remiss if we didn't address that issue. So
Well, certainly. And thank you for the opportunity. I know the council's had a lot of discussion over the years on this. One of the immediate steps the council has taken in the last few years is some adoption to amendments to adopted city policies and procedures. The notification of removing personal items that have been left unclaimed in public spaces and public right-of-way, coupled with some changes regarding panhandling and loitering in public places as well, too. All of those aimed at making sure health, welfare and safety of everybody in the community is a priority. City staff has begun taking a very focused and aggressive approach and implementing those city council policies. So I think Councilmember Steinmeier mentioned a few weeks ago, he was able to participate in the coordinated, multi-departmental effort to visit some of these unhoused camps. Again, the goal is not to dehumanize that issue, but to direct these unhoused individuals into social services, wraparound services that will begin the process of helping them transition into permanent housing. Because left unclaimed, it continues to be, again, a public health, safety and welfare issue for everybody in the community.
Right.
So that is kind of an immediate triage. Over the next five weeks, police, parks and municipal services are going to be working again in a multi-departmental coordinated effort to enforce those ordinances. But at a more macro level, we are having conversations with our peers, particularly here in the eastern Jackson County area, about how we can coordinate better because this is an issue that doesn't recognize municipal boundaries. By the very nature of the issue, this is a transient population. So we are working on solutions of how at a more macro global level, we can take a unified approach. The immediate step being, the Mid-America Regional Council has secured a grant to bring somebody on to begin to communicate with all of the social service agencies here in eastern Jackson County because far too often, each of those services' missions tend to bump into or pass by another entity. And we want to get alignment on this so that we have a strategic, coordinated, unified, thoughtful approach to how we're approaching this issue. So we sort of have this immediate triage approach here in Independence, the boots on the ground. And we have this global macro conversation about how we can create a little bit more of a strategic approach to how the cities are coordinating and making sure it's not just a game of whack-a-mole of pushing this around the county.
And to let people know, I've been involved in several meetings with the faith-based community of how do we coordinate this. And I don't have a personal policy that I've come up with yet. I'm still studying the issue. But we have to talk about it. We have to address it. We have to say, okay, what are we collectively going to do in order to help address this issue? I've looked at some white papers that, you know, cities have been successful at it, or at least somewhat successful at it. And the, and you and I have talked about this, the plans of actions that where I've seen successful cities are, they have, you know, coordinated those efforts all together so that you know where the menu of services are. And when this person needs that, you send them to the right place rather than having all of these various agencies floating out there by themselves. And then they all end up trying to be everything to everybody. So if we can unify those resources more effectively, both with the faith-based community, but also, and this is one of the things we need to, is we need to bring the state of Missouri to a reality that this in fact exists, that this is in fact a challenge for urban areas. And, you know, that's one of the things that I'll be working on to see if Jefferson City can in fact hear us in this regard and get some funding towards this. There are some interesting plans out there. I'm not going to spend all of our time talking about that. But I just think we as a body would have been remiss if we hadn't. We don't have money right here on this, but we will in fact be working on it and coming up with some plans to go forward to address that. But I just think it's so important that we talk about and let people know it's not dropping off the radar. So...
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Proceed.
I, I'm glad to hear you say what you said. I think we have, we have codes. And we, you know, we've, we've said, well, it's lack of enforcement. We know that there's been some of that. We've given more teeth to PD to send a clear message. They've done a great job doing that. We just, just so, from my position, we have more programs available for the homeless community that truly want help than any other city. Proof being that a lot of cities that don't have anything, they just ship them off to us. And then they either take advantage of what we have or they just live. And just living is becoming an expensive environmental concern. So, and while I'm never short on compassion, I think that our city is, sets a tremendous example of compassion. But what I want to say is, this is not a PD problem. This is a city-wide problem. We've got to have all hands on deck to not just go out and make the sweeps, but to go out and clean up and then to go back and make sure they're not coming back. Because I'll tell you, we run one panhandler off on I-70 and Nolan Road today, we've got two there tomorrow. And that's how it kind of goes. But it's all of our effort. It's that citywide effort. This is not a PD problem. And I want to be supportive of them. If there's more tools that they need, I hope Chief Desmond will just let us know what, what else we need to do as a body to give them everything available to, to help us control. And that's really where we're at. I think we just have to control the, the efforts to, to serve, but also to send that message and to clean up environmentally. We won't have a tourism department. We won't have capital investment if we're just this city that is just dirty and, and looks like we, we don't care. And just the opposite is true. But it is, I'm just so grateful that you're saying that. I know we're going to go sweep again and look at everything. And I'm excited to do so and hear the reports and see for myself what's going on. So, but that's my, that's my message. It's a citywide effort. We've got, we've got to put pressure on all departments involved. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on ordinance 22-045 on the second reading.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And that brings us to first readings. And Madam City Clerk, are you prepared to read all of this?
Yeah.
Fire away.
Bill number 22-050, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the 2022 Midwest High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area HIDTA Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, for the Kansas City Overland Park DEA Task Force Initiative and related documents with the Kansas Bureau of Investigation for a grand award in the amount of $153,166, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Bill number 22-051, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of the 2022 Midwest High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area HIDTA Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, for the Investigative Support Center Initiative and related documents with the Kansas City Bureau of Investigation for a grand award in the amount of $147,935, making the necessary appropriations, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Bill number 22-052, an ordinance authorizing the removal and destruction of municipal court records that have met all requirements to be eligible for such destruction and are the subject of Circuit Court Administrative Order Number 2022-216. Bill number 22-053, an ordinance approving the cooperative agreement among the City of Independence, Missouri, the Independent Square Community Improvement District and the Independent Square Main Street Corporation. Bill number 22-054, an ordinance partially vacating a platted seven and a half foot utility easement of all that part of Lot 8 Sterling Village, Second Platte, PUD, a subdivision Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. Bill number 22-055, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the US-24 Highway Phase 1 project from Missouri 291 Highway to River Boulevard as part of the US-24 Highway Phase 1 project, project number 111801, federal project number J4S3405B. Bill number 22-056, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a municipal agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the US-24 Highway Phase 2 project from River Boulevard to Sterling Avenue as part of, part of the US-24 Highway Phase 2 project, project number 112011, federal project number J4S3405. Bill number 22-0, excuse me, bill number 22-505, an ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2021/2022 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19228. Bill number 22-505, an ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 budget, which is approved by ordinance number 19228. Second and final reading.
Was that the second reading on that one or just a portion?
It's an emergency.
Okay.
It's an appropriation. So we read it twice.
Okay. And so just for everyone in the audience, that was an appropriations special emergency. We had to read it twice. So we typically would just not take a roll call in first readings, but we are here. So any discussion on 22-505? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And proceed for information and purposes only. Oh, that's just there. Okay. And that'll bring us to councilmember comments. Any councilmember comments? Proceed.
I'll start down here if you want.
Okay. I recognized him first, but I'll come back to you. That's okay.
I was going to go down the row.
There you go. Well, we can do that. Is that, is that good with you? Councilmember Spears has yielded his time and to you to proceed, councilmember.
One item tonight. Mr. City Manager, so the budget's done. What's next year's look like?
Well, if you've been tracking the national economy, there's more red lines than green lines on the Wall Street these days, which is really a reflection of inflation rising and a recession lurking around the corner. Our subsidy to the Stay Well Fund expires after this year, which was over $3 million. And our subsidy to public transit expires, which was 1.2 million. So let's hope some good news starts coming in.
I appreciate that. And I certainly don't mean to just put a terrible damper on it. We are increasingly speeding toward the cliff of not having a balanced budget that you've been telling us about for several years. So I am thankful for work all everyone did on this one, but we've really got a couple of rough ones coming up. So I just encourage you to do your best for us in getting us prepared. And if we need to make changes, let's do it.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Steinmeier?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. I'm also good. Councilmember?
Yes, just a positive comment relative to yesterday. Attended the first annual Juneteenth event at Hiram Young Park. I really have to say that I was not as well-informed on Juneteenth as I probably should have been. And it was very interesting to hear the Emancipation Proclamation read in total and, and to be part of that event. It was a good event. I want to thank those that were involved in it and, and that helped put that together. So that's all.
And I just have a quick question. How was the quality of the speakers?
Well, all of them were, most of them were pretty good.
Oh, thanks. Sure, sure, sure. Councilmember? Councilmember Stewart?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we'll call this meeting adjourned.